Member Jolly.
My sheet says Toy.
It's Christmas. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic which stands under God.
Under this wall. Liberty and justice for all.
Really, given that this is our last meeting before Christmas, it probably should have been Jolly and Toy. Of holiday members of the council. Anyway, thank you, Councilmember Toy.
You're welcome.
And welcome to the 1,911th meeting of the regular meeting of the Lava City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Wednesday, January 13, 2020. And I will note that this is our last meeting of the 2020 year. And because this is our last meeting and council's business ends at the end of the year, tonight we will have only a regular meeting that will not be followed by a study meeting as is our normal course. And when we begin in January, we will begin with only a study meeting. So, Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Toy? And your location?
I'm in Livonia, Michigan on Reberd Street.
Okay, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice President Barr?
Here in Livonia, Michigan.
Councilmember White?
Here, Aliha Acres, Florida.
Councilmember McCullough?
President, Livonia, Michigan.
Councilmember Danovic?
I am currently gone away on military duty.
Councilmember Jolly?
President, Livonia, Michigan.
President Toy?
President McIntyre.
I'm sorry, President McIntyre. I'm looking at, I'm rearranging my sheets right now because we had the order different, so I'm sorry. I'm the civic clerk right now.
President McIntyre is here, and she is coming to us live from Livonia, Michigan.
Thank you and sorry about that.
No problem. At this time, we will have the presentation of the minutes for the 1,910th regular meeting of the City Council held on December 2, 2020. Council, are there any, well, first let me ask what your thoughts on this item?
I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
Barr and then support from Jolly. Council, are there any corrections or comments on the minutes? All right, seeing none. If we could please, Madam Clerk, if you would please go ahead and just call for, take the vote on approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Toy?
Yes.
Council, Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and that's are approved by all seven members of the council. At this time, I go to the council for any announcements, tributes, or recognition that anyone on the council would like to offer.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr?
It is hard for me to believe that it's time for me to wish my oldest daughter a 17th happy birthday, which she will celebrate this week. I can't hardly get my mind around that, but it is what it is. So, Happy Birthday Macy. We love you very much.
Yes, Happy Birthday Macy. Anyone else? Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. Since this is our last meeting before the holidays, I'll just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and Happy Holidays of all kinds. I hope you all enjoy the holidays and take care.
Anyone else? All right, I would like to announce that we have new data on items 15 and 16, and I will refer more specifically to that new data when we reach those items. And it's also my pleasure to wish two of our wonderful colleagues very happy birthdays. Laura Toy, former President Toy, will be celebrating her birthday on the 22nd of December. And Councilmember Donovic will be celebrating his birthday on the 30th of December. So, happy Thanksgiving to both of you. Oh, yes, Councilmember Toy?
I just wanted to share that on my birthday a few years ago, a very special person was born as well in our city, and that's our mayor's oldest daughter, Marie, was also her birthday. So, while she's a little bit older than I am, because she was born then, we'd like to wish her a happy birthday on Christmas too.
Oh, very nice.
Yes.
Happy birthday, Marie, for us. All right, Councilmember Danovic?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say thank you for the birthday wishes. One year closer to the big 30. I'll be 29, so I'm excited. And if you have any advice, Councilwoman Toy, I'd love to take it. I know you'll be 30 years old too here shortly.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some advice. The next 28 years are going to go very, very quickly. And I'd like to take this opportunity to wish my colleagues very, very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. It's a joy working with all of you. Also to wish everyone in our city, all of our department heads, all of our outstanding employees, and all of our residents, and all of the businesses a very safe and happy holiday season. I wanted to take a minute to give a special thank you to those who will work 24/7 throughout the holidays, and those are some of the folks that serve us in Livonia, our police and fire departments, who never never are shuttered for a holiday. Also, our St. Mary Hospital, a number of other health facilities, long-term care facilities in our city. And we could just keep a good thought, and certainly those in our armed forces. And if we could just keep a good thought and wear appropriate prayers for all of those who serve 365 days, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And also, I wanted to take a moment to wish a very happy special Hanukkah to our Assistant City Attorney, Eric Goldstein, who we miss seeing at City Hall. We miss seeing a lot of people at City Hall. Eric is continuing his amazing fight against a brain tumor. And just as Eric was a source of joy and inspiration and knowledge and kindness when he was here every day at City Hall, he continues to be those things. Well, he's away, but if we could all just keep a good thought for Eric. And Eric, we wish you and your family a very happy fifth night of Hanukkah. That's the, that's the, oh, and I guess I should wish my eldest son David, who will be turning 23 on January 5, a very, very happy birthday. He was due on December 22. And as I think I said, my first year in council, that should have been an indication to us that David would do every single thing in his life according to his own timetable. And he has, but we couldn't be prouder of him, and he's really filled our lives with great joy for almost 24 years. And with that, it's always a pleasure to introduce our department heads. And as you all know, it's a bit more difficult when we're doing this on, when we're doing this on Zoom, because I can't just look around like I normally do. So, I go by the order. Let me back up. And I also want to wish the Jolly family, who I know is challenged with some COVID right now, and as are many Livonia families, a speedy recovery gym for everyone in the family. So, keeping a good thought for all of you, and it's testament to your dedication, your ethic, that you're with, your work ethic, that you're with us tonight. So, wish you all a speedy recovery. Anyway, back to introduction of the department heads. I do it just in the order. I see everyone on the screen around my list. We'll begin with our Director of Economic Planning and Development, and has worn a lot of other hats this year, and along the lines of emergency, getting together our PPEs and their contributions, and that's Mr. Mark Terramina. Our City Clerk, who I'm sure can't be happier to see the end of the year 2020. And that's Susan Nash. Our Manager of the Council Office and Council Administration, Sarah Kasperwich. Our City Attorney, Mr. Paul Burnier. Our City Engineer, Mr. Todd Zalinsik. Our Director of Governmental Affairs, Ms. LaShawn Thomas. Our Director of Information Services, who again, I'd like to say that he's probably happy to see the end of this year, but seeing as we are going to continue on with everything virtual in 2021, I'm not sure how excited he is for 2021, but that's Casey O'Neil. And then not appearing on the screen, Brandy Isaacson, our Director of Housing. Dave Hevner, our Fire Chief. Dave Varga, our Director of Environmental Services. Linda Sheel, our City Treasurer. And two more. Mike Slater, our Director of Finance, and our Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Resources, Mr. Ted Davis. And at this time, we go to audience, we go to the first session of audience communication. And as we always do, we will ask our Council Parliamentarian, the Honorable Kathy White, if she would please read the rules for audience communication. Thank you, Councilmember White. You're on mute.
There we go. The rules of audience communication are as follows. Members of the public audience at the meeting shall not speak until they are recognized by the chair. Each person recognized by the chair to address the council shall identify himself or herself and by name, and if appropriate, group affiliation. A person addressing the council on an item on the agenda shall be limited to two minutes, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council president, and shall be recognized to speak prior to council's consideration of the item. There will be an audience communication section of not more than 30 minutes duration at the beginning of all council regular and study meetings, where citizens may address the council. There is a similar audience communication section at the end of all regular and study council meetings, where again, citizens may address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda of that meeting. Citizens who wish to expand upon their remarks will be asked to reduce the matter to writing and submit it to the city clerk, and such item may be placed on a future council study session for further consideration. A person addressing council under the audience communications portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of three minutes at each study or regular meeting, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council president. A citizen may address the council once during audience communication. If the citizen has addressed the council during the first audience communication period at the beginning of the meeting, the citizen will not be permitted to address the council again during any audience communication period at the end of the meeting. Anyone addressing the council shall make responsible comments. Personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks are not permitted, and anyone causing a breach of the peace may be removed from the council meeting. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you very much, Councilmember White. So, at this time, we'll go to the audience. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on any item, not on this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. And I'm looking, and I'm not seeing anyone. I will ask one more time, anyone from the audience would like to address the council? Going once, going twice, no audience communication this evening. So, we will continue with our agenda with reports from the mayor and other city officials, and we do not have, excuse me, sorry about that, my agenda. We don't have any such reports this evening, so we'll move ahead with our consent agenda. Items 1 through 8 on this evening's agenda are on the consent agenda, and they're voted on as one item. It doesn't mean that they're any less important than any other item on the agenda, but rather that they were determined not to be controversial in nature when we discuss these issues and review them at our study meeting on December 2. Council? Councilmember White?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Support from Councilmember Jolly. And if we could please, Madam Clerk, if you would please take the vote on approval of consent agenda.
Sorry, it takes a little longer actually with civic clerk. Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved unanimously. And with that, we move along. Excuse me, sorry. I'm slightly challenged with my notes this evening. Again, my apologies. I got out of order, my papers. All right. We move on with unfinished business, beginning with item number nine. This is a roll call vote. It's a proposed amendment. The Livonia Code of Ordinance is amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law to amend Section 070 of Chapter 2.36, Commission on Aging, and the first reading was given by Jim Jolly on December 2, 2020.
I'll offer a second reading, Madam President.
All right, any discussion? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the change to this ordinance?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye.
And again, my apologies. I've got my, I got, somehow managed to get my notes out of order. So, we will continue with item number 10, and this is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance is amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law to amend Section 0.040 of Chapter 2.40, and this is the Arts Commission, the first commission. The first reading was given by Councilmember Jim Jolly on December 2, 2020.
Madam President, I'll offer a second reading at this time.
Any discussion? Anyone?
Madam President?
Yes.
Just, just very quickly here, all of these ordinance amendments that we are discussing, the last one, this one, I believe the next three, are just more or less ordinance amendments to clean up where the different commissions and committees lie within the city of Livonia, within the appropriate administrative structure with changes that have been instituted recently by me.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm sorry. I thought someone said something. Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the roll call vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And I should have, I should have indicated as in the first, in the previous item, item number nine, the ordinance will become effective upon publication in the newspaper. Moving on, item number 11, a roll call vote. This is also a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance is amended regarding discussions from the Department of Law to amend Section 040 of Chapter 2.44. This is the Commission on Children and Youth. The first reading was given by Councilmember Jim Jolly on December 2, 2020.
I'll offer a second reading at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Jolly has offered second reading. Any discussion, any comments from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the, would you please go ahead and take the call the vote on this?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the ordinance, the ordinance change is amended, and it will become effective upon publication in the newspaper. Item number 12 is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance is amended. This comes from the Department of Law to amend Section 070 of Chapter 2.52. This is the Historic Commission. The first reading was given by Councilmember Jim Jolly on December 2, 2020.
I'll offer a second reading, Madam President.
All right, Councilmember Jolly has offered second reading. Is there any discussion by the council or any members of the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on amendment of this ordinance?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the proposed amendment is passed and will become effective on publication in the newspaper. And finally, item number 13, roll call vote. This is also a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinance is amended, coming to us from the Department of Law to amend Section 080 after 2.56 Historic Preservation Commission. The first reading was given by Councilmember Jim Jolly on December 2, 2020.
I'll offer a second reading, Madam President.
Thank you. Any discussion by the council or anyone in the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the roll call vote?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the amendment is approved, and by all members of council, or the resolution is approved by all members of council, and the ordinance will become effective upon publication in the newspaper. With that, we move on to item number 14. This is a request to authorize the Parks and Recreation Commission the ability to set certain fees and charges. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation at the Livonia Senior Center, Greenmead League Athletic Play and Outdoor Activities and Rentals. Council, Councilmember Toy?
Madam Chair, at this time, I'd like to offer a committee of the whole meeting on this, if I may?
Refer to Committee of the Whole, correct?
Yes, please.
Do we have support?
Support.
I think, I think Councilmember Danovic beat you by a hair, Vice President Barr. A support from Councilmember Danovic? Council, any discussion? Would anyone from the audience like to comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you would please go ahead and vote on this resolution, and this resolution from Councilmember Toy to refer this item to Committee of the Whole.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic? I'm sorry, McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the council approves unanimously approves the resolution to refer this to Committee of the Whole. Thank you. And then with that, we go on to item number 15. And this is a request to enter into agreement through the qualification-based QBS process with Detroit Architectural Group, DLZ Michigan Incorporated, Hobo Roth &amp; Clark Incorporated, and OHM Advisors. And this comes to us from the Finance Department. And this would be to provide as-needed architectural services, and I would like to bring to council's attention that we do have new data, the communication, I'm sorry, received from the Director of Finance dated December 7, 2020. With respect to this item, I'd like to request that it be received and placed on file for the information of the council. Council? Councilmember McCullough?
Madam President, I'd like to offer an approving resolution.
Port, port from Councilmember Toy? Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President Barr?
I just want to thank the Mike Slater and whoever else for the, just the new data that came in on this. The two things that were added about the cap on the amounts for this at $500,000 as far as estimated construction costs, as well as the stipulation that it would only be used for things that have been included in the already-approved budget, the annual budget. For me, those were, I saw the merit in this from the beginning, but any concerns I had about council giving up appropriate authority as far as controlling expenditures, controlling budget, were really put to rest by those two things. I think those are wise stipulations to put in, and I think this is a really good idea actually to drive some further efficiency in the city for projects that we will have already approved of in the budget. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Would anyone else like to comment on this agenda item? Would anyone from the audience like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the vote on item number 15?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Danovic?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the resolution passes, and we will be, the resolution to, for the city to enter into agreement through the QBS process with the architectural groups named, is approved. Item number 16 is a request for a resolution approving a brownfield plan and reimbursement agreement with the city with the Plymouth Road Development Authority, PRDA, the City of Livonia, Brownfield Development, I'm having a difficult time tonight, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and the Interlocal Agreement with the Plymouth Road Development Authority, PRDA, for the development of a new industrial building located on the east side of Echoes Road between Amrin Road and the CSX Railroad, 12950 and 13100 Echoes Road in the northwest quarter of Section 30, is requested by SME on behalf of Ashley Capital and Livonia West Commerce Center 2 pursuant to and in accordance with Act Number 381 of Public Acts of 1996, as amended. And I would like to note that we had the public hearing, we held the public hearing on this item on November 23, 2020, and as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, we do, we do have new data on this item, item number 16, and as respectfully suggested, the communication received from Kyle Morton of Ashley Capital dated December 14, 2020, with respect to this item, be received and placed on file for the information of the council. Council? Councilmember Jolly? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Madam President, I was just going to offer an approving resolution.
Discussion?
Give me a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's part of, that's a good discussion.
Support from, support from Councilmember Toy?
Madam President, if I may, just quickly, in my opinion, this brownfield development plan is quite literally the reason why these types of plans exist. This will clean up a very polluted site in Livonia. A site that without such a plan probably would have very little chance of being cleaned up anytime in the immediate future. We've done this other places in the city, but to me, this is the most compelling. I have no problem at all voting for this. On a personal note, I'll say that this is, this is important for me, as my father worked at the previous GM facility that caused the original pollution there, so I'm happy to be part of the solution and cleaning it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, or President. My only question? My only question I have, or one of my major questions is, because I can't seem to find my notes and, um, my phone and everywhere else, and it's, it is, um, how many years is this for again? Uh. This is, is this for the thirty-year one, or no?
Th- th- this is, but the current, Mark, I'm going to go to you, um, if I, if I may, Madam.
You'll find it, Madam President.
So, the duration of the plan, um, was lowered from thirty years, uh, to twenty-eight years. And the amount of, uh, the total of the eligible, uh, costs, uh, was lowered as well, uh, to roughly nine point seven to four million dollars.
Thank you, um.
Mr. Chair, do I still have the floor?
Yes, you do.
Uh, thank you, um, if I may, um, I'm not sure, perhaps Mark is the best one to ask. Is this, um, have we ever offered, uh, this period of time, um, twenty-eight years? I mean, it seems a little long, is there a good reason for that? Uh, I know businesses want to stretch it as much, and I appreciate that, and as my colleague has said, it's, it, the site is untied, you know, is polluted, et cetera, but, um, it just seems a little ex- in the, uh, um, so could you help me out on that? Is this, what's, maybe the better question is, what is the longest we've ever granted anyone on a brownfield in the city, if we have an answer to that?
Yeah, I believe the answer there is either thirteen or fourteen years. Um, the only time the city has, that I'm aware of, uh, has approved, uh, a tax incentive uh, of this length was for A one-two-three, and that was in the form of a personal property exemption.
Right.
Um, you asked reasons why, and I'll let the applicant really, uh, respond to that, uh, but, um, the duration of the plan is needed in order for the developer, uh, to be reimbursed for all of the eligible expenses, uh, of this project. And I think we went over those in, in some detail at the public hearing, uh, but as we measure the, um, the tax increment, uh, that would be collected on an annual basis, you really have to extend that out over the twenty-eight years in order for, uh, all of those eligible expenses to be paid a- and other costs that are associated with it, um, so.
And how many acres is that over there?
Well, the, the primary parcel, uh, where most of the costs are involved is, is just under nineteen acres. Uh, there is a second, there is a second property that's involved, that's about twenty acres. Uh, so all the, altogether, just under, uh, just under forty acres, but the, uh, the main property where most of the work and where the building would be located is the, uh, is the nineteen-acre site.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm just, I'm just, if I may, I'm just, um, concerned that it's almost double what we've ever granted, but then again, the site is quite large, so, um, I, I, I'm struggling with, you know, what's the appropriate, um, number, but, um, perhaps we have it right. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, um, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President, um, I just want to, you know, looking at this and kind of touching base over the last meeting we had on this in the public hearing, uh, I know that there is, and Councilmember Toy, this might help too, is, there's a line item in there for, I think it's one point two, a little over one point two million dollars that the petitioner is looking for for potential, they won't know that, obviously, until construction begins, so, you know, I, I think I said on record that I had hoped that this would go down at some point to the range of maybe seven and a half mil, and maybe drop the years down a little bit, but, you know, the size of the sun, um, you know, I definitely think that this is something that we need to, to obviously have remediated, and it's a good development. Um, I also just wanted to just take a quick moment and give a shout out to the, uh, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, um, for putting in the time. I've, I've spent hours reading the notes that they had from their meetings, and a lot of work and effort has went into this, so, uh, kudos to them as well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough, Vice President Barr, and then, uh, I'll go back to, uh, Councilmember Jolly.
Yeah, I, when we first saw this, whenever it was we first saw this, I know we had a couple rapid response meetings on it, and then there was the public hearing that we spent a lot of time crunching through this. Um, I, I came into that public hearing, I'll be honest, they can absolutely no way for this length of time. Um, the longest, the lo- the longest duration we've had for brownfield in the past in the city of the four that we have is thirteen years, they were asking thirty, it now down to twenty-eight. Um, I, I will say, having, having spent a lot of time digging into this, asking a lot of questions, um, I became much more amenable to what was being asked than, than what I ever thought I would be. Um, I, I do think that, you know, when we're looking at, at brownfield, it's really a matter of, um, it's primarily a matter of the eligible costs more than it is the years, the years are really a result of the cost. Um, and, and having looked through the costs, while I'm certainly not, uh, a total expert on everything here, um, it, there's nothing that sticks out to me as a major red flag. Also appreciate Ashley's, you know, just investment in the city over the years and continued, and I, and I think they've been very straight with us as well, and I, I appreciate that. Um, all that being said, so, so as far as the brownfield declaration, even the eligible costs have been laid out here, I'm, I'm largely fine with, I, I do really struggle with that length of time, however, um, while it's, while it's legally permissible under a brownfield, i- it's just way beyond anything we've ever done before, and, um, I, I, so I'd be willing to support this, but I struggle with the twenty-eight years, I'd rather see it, I, I know Ashley has told us that, uh, they absolutely can't do it with twenty, which is where I was originally thinking. I'm gonna, I'm gonna respect their, um, their feedback on that, um, but I, I also recognize that there's a lot of moving pieces with a deal like this, and we're talking about a, a pending deal for a piece of property. And when I look at things like, you know, the need to demolish things that are there, I, I understand the environmental side of it, and I even understand the extreme nature of, of some of the removal that has to be done here, but there's a certain element, a certain percentage of this too, that just, um, come with, with a piece of property this that, that plays into the, to the purchase price. I mean, it's, it's not like the city of Livonia needs to be eating all of the cost of redeveloping a site like this, so, I, where, where I've settled is, I'd be willing to support this, but I'd want to see something, I, I'd want to see twenty-five, I, just twenty-eight, I, again, gonna respect what Ashley said about they absolutely can't do it at twenty, but I, I have to believe that there's room to work with the various levers here, um, that we could do it at twenty-five. Um, it feels a little bit more palatable to me, and, uh, as Councilman McCullough already referenced, there's, there's actually reasonable opportunity, I know we don't know that this will happen, but I know they've already expressed that there's, there's a chance it could, the cost could get low enough, that that won't be an issue for them, but I would be much more comfortable with this at, at twenty-five years, thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So, as we all know, this is driven by the cost of the cleanup. If the cost of the cleanup should happen to go down, the capture period would also be shortened in that period of time as well. This is, as far as I understand it, probably the most polluted site in the city of Livonia. It has been for a very long time. I think it's important to get this deal done, to clean up the property, and alleviate any potential negative consequences of this property going forward. If the property is cleaned up quicker at a lower cost, the amount of years will naturally be lower because less money will have to be recaptured. I would hate to artificially limit the amount of years for the purpose of limiting the years alone, uh, despite the fact that it is many years being asked for, uh, because I think it's more important at this point to have the piece of property cleaned up, and then ultimately put back on the tax rolls going forward to generate income for the city and the many tax bases that we'll draw from it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly, uh, Council, Councilmember Toy.
Well, Madam Chair, thank you, um, I'm glad we're discussing this a little bit, because, um, maybe it wasn't meant to be, I couldn't find my notes or get them real handy here, but, um, my concern is this, um, when I was in the Michigan Senate, I sat on, uh, committee that actually did brownfield legislation, and the intent of that was to not, um, handcuff communities, but to help them, uh, as been said, to clean up the environmental issues that, uh, they faced, um, and there's some pretty big sites in and around the state, obviously, um, but I, I, I just, I, I, I have, and I struggle with, you know, somebody comes in at thirty, they go down to twenty-eight, is that a real effort? I don't mean to pick on anyone, or act like I'm not grateful for that, but, um, I tend to think, you know, we can't settle somewhere a little bit less even, um, than the twenty-eight. I mean, two years from the thirty just doesn't seem real, real, um, excessive, if you know what I mean, or maybe, you know, I don't know, I'd, I'd almost like to hear the petitioner on the twenty-five years that Councilman Barr recommended. Um, you know, I also am interested in saving our money for the city. Everybody likes raises in our city and, and buying nice things for our community, and when we do that, it costs money too. And while I appreciate the efforts of this, uh, company, they are a wonderful company, done wonderful things for Livonia, I also want to be within reason, and I don't think twenty-eight is out of the question, don't get me wrong, but if I can get twenty-five, um, I hate to be a barter here, but I'd really like to say that in light of the site, as large as it is, in light of the number of years and the cost going in, I think that has to be made at the time of the deal or the sale, a lot of that consideration, but so be it. Well, we'll see what happens, I guess, thank you, though.
Thank you, uh, I, I will, I, I see that, uh, two members from the, from the petitioner's party have their hands up. I would like to go to Councilmember White before I go to the petitioner. Councilwoman White.
Thank you, Madam President, I have no problem with the brownfield, um, being placed in existence here. It's very, very justified and needed, but I also have a, more of a comfort level with twenty-five years, and so if the motion goes forward, um, as is, I would be voting no. Um, if, if there is a, uh, majority sentiment on the part of the council to, uh, change the number of years to twenty-five, then I will be fully in support, thank you.
Thank you, um, and I, I do want to go to the petitioner, but, um, at this time, I am going to, um, we have to do it, uh, virtually, I can't do it, uh, literally, I have to do it figuratively. I'm, I'm going to pass the, the gavel to Vice President Barr. Um, he has the virtual gavel. Thank you, Vice President Barr, I am in, um, complete support of this project, and as has been noted, this is one of the most, um, contaminated sites in Livonia, it's extremely large site, the contamination goes back, I, you know, I, I mean, the, the, there's really no adequate way to describe the, the level of contamination other than to say total and, and horrible. Um, and I, I admire Ashley Capital, number one, for the outstanding work they've done in our community, number two, for being able, being willing to step up and figure out a way to do this. Um, I support Mr. Barr's point on the twenty-five, not, not because it's, a- and I know that, uh, Council, Councilmember White has indicated, and perhaps Councilmember Toy's support for it as well. I don't support it because twenty-five is the magic number, but I think what Mr. Barr was saying is, um, it, it leaves the door open for the petitioner to continue negotiations on the purchase of the site from Racer Trust. And when, um, when GM fell for bankruptcy and the, uh, the courts intervened and, um, decided how things were going to move forward, uh, new GM emerged with, um, not holding the bag for any of their sites like this one, that were terribly contaminated. They went to, um, old GM, which I believe became Racer Trust, not sure exactly how that happened, but Racer Trust is now the, um, the, the legal entity that holds these sites, and the people that were really punished were the communities, because, um, you know, GM went forward as an ongoing concern, and you had an organization, um, holding the contaminated sites, and the cities had, were, were left, the communities were left with no recourse. Um, so I'm, like, again, very appreciative of, um, Racer Trust's efforts to sell this property, of, um, Ashley Capital's interest in developing this property, but I, I think that, um, I, I think that with some perhaps additional negotiation in the purchase, the amount of money needed could be lower to the, to the level where a twenty-five, where it could be recouped in twenty-five years. And if you look at what is being asked for on a per annum basis, if you, if you get twenty-four or twenty-five level, a twenty-five-year payback, I believe it takes the, uh, the payback per year, if you will, or the brownfield credit, i- it makes it commensurate with other brownfield projects in Livonia. Um, so then it, you know, it becomes more of an apples to apples, so thank you, uh, Vice, thank you, Vice President. I don't know if you'd like to keep the gavel at this time?
I was looking through my brownfield minutes, um, no, I'd be happy to pass the gavel back to you, Madam President.
All right, thank you very much, um, at this time, I will, oh, again, before I go to the petitioner, I will go to, uh, Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, like all of us have said, Ashley Capital has done great work with this, uh, property, some hundred acres, uh, Amazon is there, RNDC is there, uh, so adding, uh, another industrial building there and cleaning up, uh, contamination will be a great thing for the community. But I too support twenty-five years, I think it's more fiscally responsible for the community, it also helps, uh, Ashley Capital purchase this property, fix the issues that it, it currently has, and also employ, you know, some hundred and eighty people, I believe, so this is a great idea for the city of Livonia, but I support twenty-five years.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Donavick. All right, and, uh, if there's no one else from the council, I will go to, um, I will go to Miss, both Mr. Morton and, uh, Kyle Morton and Susan Harvey have their hands up. I don't know which one of them wishes to, uh, speak first, I will go to, um, to Mr. Morton, and, um, Kyle, if you'd like me to, I'd be happy to go to Susan first, your, uh, your preference.
I'll defer to the senior and see if she wants me to speak or let her speak.
All right, I'll go, uh, then I'll go to, uh, Susan Harvey. And I think.
Okay, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Uh, good evening, uh, thank you very much, and, and Kyle, I'm gonna try to forgive you for calling me the senior. But, uh, I just would like to address a couple things, um, thank you, I know you're all being very thoughtful about this, and it is a big deal, and we can appreciate, uh, how important it is to the city. Um, so, again, I would like to clear up, the Racer Trust is not in any way connected to the former Z, uh, GM or the current GM, it was established by the Department of Treasury to clean up sites. And Mr. Barr, I understand your point that perhaps there's some negotiating room in the purchase price between Ashley Capital and, uh, the Racer Trust, but if the Racer Tru- the difference between the Racer Trust giving us this property for free and giving it to us for the property that their purchase price that we're under contract for is de minimis. It is, it is a negligible purchase price, something that I think that they have to have a price in the contract, probably pursuant to their, their rules under Treasury. Um, this is a very challenging property, uh, we are not paying hardly anything for this property. Um, and so there is, there just isn't any room there. Under a normal negotiation or situation, I think your assumption would be correct, um, but it's not correct here, and if, if it were possible for me to disclose the amount of the Racer Trust, I'm sure I signed some confidentiality, so I, I couldn't hear at this moment, uh, but it is de minimis. Um, I think the other thing that's important, uh, to note, and I'm gonna, Kyle can speak to this more, that while it is true that Livonia has not done a brownfield of this size or duration before, there's nothing at all unprecedented about this in the Detroit metropolitan area or in Michigan. Um, this is a large project that is in line with some of the largest brownfields that have been done in Michigan, and this is consistent, and the terms are consistent with that, even though I know if you just look at it through a Livonia lens, and you say, this is the biggest one we've ever done, um, that's true, but until this one, I don't remember what the last largest and longest one was, but, um, you know, there was a precedent before this one as well. There's nothing arbitrary, when we went from thirty to twenty-eight years, that wasn't, um, that wasn't just a goodwill gesture to, to say to the city, okay, we'll take two years off. Um, there wasn't anything arbitrary about it, it's because we. It's because we continued to look at the costs and find ways to reduce the costs so that we could reduce the brownfield. We will continue to try to reduce our costs any place we can because, again, there's no motivation for a developer to spend money on things that they don't absolutely have to spend money on to redevelop a property. To spend dollars next year to wait to get them back 28 years from now is not, you know, not a good business decision if there's any way you can avoid making that decision. So while we hope that it takes, that we spend less money and that 28 years goes to 25 years, that would be the best outcome for the city of Livonia and for the developer. But we can't say for sure what those costs are, which is why we need the 28 years to protect ourselves from that. And we haven't been overly conservative. We haven't thrown in numbers that are, you know, excessive. With being very realistic about it, we'll continue to try to work to get it down. And now I will go back to my junior and ask Kyle to comment as well.
Good evening, Kyle.
Are you able to, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I think there are a few kind of points to touch on here. I think the optically, the 30 years to 28 years. I just want to note that 30 years is the statutory limit. So we actually were at 34 years, and so we've substantially brought this in. We also had made some adjustments to adding money to the Livonia Brownfield Rotating Fund and also switched the capture, it was originally 100% capture, to 90% capture. So we've tried to, and that dilutes us from our capture in terms of years. So we've tried to make changes to this plan to be more in line with what Livonia has historically approved. Susan mentioned this as well, but there have been two large brownfield plans that have been approved in the city of Detroit recently. These were sent over in part of that email I sent on Friday. One was the Cadillac stamping plant, which was a 20, over $20 million brownfield plan, which hit 30 years. And then Dakota's built a suit at the Kettering High School, also had a 30-year time period. And I think Vice President Barr mentioned this. It's really a factor of cost, but it's also what the use is that we're developing. If this ended up being just, for instance, a hotel or a multifamily property, which, based on the contamination and the surrounding uses, would not be likely and based on the zoning. If this was a higher density use, you'd get repaid in a lot shorter period of time. We're just, we're stuck with what our taxable value is. And this is literally the biggest building we can build on this small piece of land that's on 19 acres. So we understand the concern, but as Susan mentioned, spending a dollar today and getting it back in 28 years with no interest, there's no interest in these plans. Some municipalities allow interest, this does not. So all the money that we can take out, and as Councilmember McCullough mentioned, that $1.2 million is important in that unknown. We don't have good maps. We don't know what's below this slab. We've done our best to do geotechnical borings. But there's no existing plans from when GM built this facility. So we've had to take a lot of assumptions of what conditions there are. We're guessing at how thick the floor is. If it's two inches thicker, if there are more utilities, those are all costs that we're going to have to bear. And we can't find that out until we actually start demolition. So there's a lot of inherent risk in this demolition plan rather than just a typical new construction project where you're building up. We're actually tearing down and going down into the ground to try to build backup. So happy to address any other comments or concerns, but I think that summarizes some of the questions that were asked.
Thank you very much, Kyle. Any, Council or Vice President Barr?
Yeah. Thanks, Madam President. So thank you, Kyle and Susan. You know, with all the extensive discussion we've had on this and the time I've spent on this, there wasn't anything new that they told me. And yet, they, and yet the comments were well-placed and well-timed. And, you know, just as I think about the ways that I've swayed on this, you know, you make persuasive arguments. As I said, I think you've been straight with us in this process. Susan, I appreciate your comments about the purchase price and can understand that. And I do think there is a lot to be said for the fact that regardless of what we decide on this, it's not like we're giving incentive with this for the cost of the ride. There's plenty of incentive baked in for the developer, you know, self-interest for them to keep the cost as low as possible. So having heard all that, I'm fine proceeding with what Councilman Jolly's proposed.
Thank you. Councilmember White.
I also was going to say, I made some assumptions at the beginning, but in listening to the statements made by Ashley Capital, I concur that it looks to me like 28 years would be appropriate under the circumstances. And I say that with a little bit of reservation, but I can, I believe, also support the 28 years based on the comments that were made. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. Vice President Barr, did you have something else?
I didn't, but since you asked, I'm just going to tack on to what Councilwoman White said and just reemphasize something that's already been said, and that is just the fact that there's high likelihood this is going to, I shouldn't say high likelihood. There's reasonable likelihood, it sounds like, that this could end up being more in the neighborhood of 25 years anyway, if costs go the way both Ashley and I want them to be. So it's been mentioned already, just was good to remind everyone of that. Thanks.
I'm going to pass the gavel again, if I may, Vice President Barr, to you. And I appreciate Susan Harvey's comments about the Racer Trust negotiation piece. And I hope I was clear, in no way was I suggesting that any of the issues associated with Racer Trust or the way the deals are structured is the result of anything that any of the people working with Racer Trust to clean these properties up or to assume the responsibility for cleaning these up as they develop them. I'm very, very appreciative of the private sector companies that are willing to step in and take on these sites. So thank you, Susan, for the comments. I appreciated it. And with that in mind, I too am comfortable in supporting the 28 years. And Mr. Barr, do you wish to keep the gavel?
Point of order, Madam President. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I believe once you hand the gavel, it needs to remain over. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I was going to keep it anyway, just for the fun of it, take it through the vote at least. I mean...
Thank you. I haven't passed it many times, Mr. Jolly, I think once, and he reminded me. It's his for the duration. He can give it back after this item. Councilmember Toy.
Actually, Madam President, if you don't mind, Councilwoman Toy.
Thank you. Old habits.
Hey, Vice President's got to have a little fun before the year's out, so.
That's true.
Councilwoman Toy, go ahead. You're muted.
Thank you very much. I just, I want to share with you that, again, I think discussion is healthy. I think that, you know, we have to ask some questions sometimes of different petitioners. I think it was extremely appropriate that we were able to get some history and some more comments from the petitioners as well. I think that clarified unanswered questions, as I think some of you pointed out, of new information. And I would like to see us continue when we question something to bring forward those comments because it really, you know, even though it's a voting meeting, this should have been figured out, you know, before, it's okay. I mean, new things derive and arrive. And so subsequently, we need to understand various issues better. That's why when I supported Jim's motion, I did it for sake of discussion because I wasn't real clear on it because I couldn't find my notes, once again. So thank you, Council, for bringing it forward. Thank you, Ashley Capital and others that have participated in this. And we value all that, in my opinion. That has really shed a lot of light, more light on it. And Jim was way ahead of us on this one. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy. I'm not sure what new information was presented tonight, but thanks for your comment. Rob Donavich, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. My main motivation ultimately is to make sure that we're being good stewards of taxpayer dollars and doing what's best for the city of Livonia today and also 30 years from now, 50 years from now, 100 years from now. With that base, that I don't want to stop this moving forward. And if the petitioner believes that they can do their best to be good stewards of our tax dollars and work to lower the years. Ashley Capital has been a great partner with the community, and I do believe them, like Mr. Barr said. So I think this will be great for the community, and I'm looking forward to seeing this site brought back to life. Thank you, Mr. Vice President and Madam Vice President and Madam President.
All right. Are there any other comments from council? Councilwoman Toy, did you, your hand's still up. Did you have something else, or was that from before? Okay. All right. Well, with that, we've got an approving resolution as was offered for the 28 years. Ms. Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Muted.
I can't hear you. President McIntyre, there's the... I was trying to unmute. I can't get it right tonight. Vice President Barr.
Aye. And the motion passes, I will pass the gavel back to Council President McIntyre.
All right. Thank you. And now we move on to the new business portion of our agenda, beginning with item number 17. This is, I now have to catch up with my notes. This is a request for authorization to sell city-owned scattered-site housing property acquired from the Federal Community Development Block Grant CDBG program. This comes to us from the Livonia Housing Commission for the home located at 10033 Garden to Kemba Ledford for a sale price of $179,900. And with that, we will...
Hello?
Good afternoon. Mr. Chair, Mina?
I apologize for interrupting like this, but I just picked up on the fact, and Mike Slater reminded me that we have a second resolution in connection with that previous item. Did you just, you just adopted the brownfield plan, but there's a second resolution prepared, item number B, for the development agreement.
No, thank you. All right. So then I guess we go back to, we go back, Vice President Barr assumes the gavel again and for item B, which would approve the reimbursement agreement. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion on that?
Oh, move.
Moved by Councilwoman Toy.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Councilman Jolly. This will also give me a chance to rectify something else that I missed, which is to give the audience a chance to speak on this. So we'll do that in a second. Just want to make sure that there's anyone from Congress that has something they want to say on this piece. Okay, seeing no one, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? And seeing no one, Madam Clerk, we can take the vote on that item.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye. Motion passes, and with that, I will pass the gavel again back to President McIntyre.
All right. I think we're all set. That's the mark correct. Those are the two resolutions that we had to vote on, right?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that, we will go on with new business. And I will read the new business item again, since I confused the issue. This is a request for authorization to sell city-owned scattered-site housing property acquired from the Federal Community Block Grant CDBG program. This comes to us from the Livonia Housing Commission for the home located at 10033 Garden to Kemba Ledford for a sale price of $179,900. Council.
Motion.
Councilmember Toy.
Before I move it, if I may, just real quick, on my agenda, it's saying a sale price of $168,000. Is this wrong, or which one is right?
I need to talk. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I apologize. I did not realize.
We do have some discrepancy here. In one, in one part, in one place, I see $179,900, the other I see $168,000.
I apologize for that outburst. I didn't realize I was, I thought I was still muted. Yes. What had happened is initially, they did...
If you could just, Brandy, right now, if you could just give us the correct price.
Okay. It's $168,000.
I'll move it.
And I want to explain again to the audience calling us at home, we have a new program, Civic Clerk, as to how we put the agendas together and put the information. And we're all getting used to it, and it leads to some disconnects. And we're, we just ask you to bear with us for the next month or so as we work our way through everyone learning this new system. So the Livonia, this comes to us from the Livonia Housing Commission for the home located at 10033 Garden to Kemba Ledford for a sale price of $168,000. Moved by Toy, support from...
For...
McCullough. All right, council? All right, council has no questions. Brandy, I don't know if there's any other information that you'd like to share. And again, thank you for making sure that we had the sale price correct.
No, it, the original sale price was $179,900. However, with it being an AVA mortgage, they did require a secondary appraisal. And that secondary appraisal came in lower. So our only option was to either accept the lower price or to put it back on the market and only accept the cash or conventional offers. So, you know, the goal is to offer housing to low-to-moderate income families in Livonia. And this was an opportunity for this family who was currently renting an apartment in Canton to relocate to Livonia and purchase a house. So we moved forward with the revised sale price.
Thank you very much, Ms. Isaacson. And I should have noted that Ms. Isaacson is the Director of Housing in Livonia. All right. Anyone else from the audience wish to speak on this item? If not, Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote on the being resolution to sell the city-owned property? Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre. Aye. And the resolution is approved, and we will unanimously, and we will look forward to welcoming this family to Livonia. 18 is acceptance of grant of easement. This comes to us from the Department of Law, secured without monetary consideration from Ashley Masternardi LLC for a public utility easement in connection with the water main constructed at 28700 Plymouth Road in the south half of Section 25, parcel ID 46-099-99-0151-04. Council.
Madam President, I'll offer an approving resolution.
Approving resolution from Councilmember Jolly, support from...
I'll support.
Was that Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Support from McCullough. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, anyone from the audience wish to comment? Seeing no discussion, anyone from the audience wish to comment or offer any discussion on this item? Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, would you go ahead and take the vote? Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovanick.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre. Aye, and um, the uh, the, the uh, we accept the grant of easement. And always happy when we can accept those and there's no monetary consideration. Item nineteen, our final item of business for the year 2020 is a request to schedule a closed committee of the whole meeting. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for um, purpose of discussing strategy connected with the negotiations of collective bargaining agreements, Council. So move, White, support. Wait, I'm, I'm, approving.
It was moved by Toy, supported by White.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, any discussion, any from the audience? Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote? Councilmember Toy.
Yes.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovanick. Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre. Aye, and we will be uh, the request is approved, so we will be scheduling a closed committee of the whole. Before, as for um, before we go back to audience communication, I, I would like to just take a point of privilege, and one thing I might say at the beginning of the meeting, and I forgot, was um, this was a, this was a, everything going on this year in COVID, and I, I think the city at every level, um, the mayor's office, all of the departments, um, our elected officials, the present company not included, uh, really stepped up. Our businesses, our residents, our healthcare facilities stepped up in an amazing way, it was a difficult year. That said, we had uh, one really, um, I think, very positive thing happen. Uh, we, the, the positive part was not Judy Preby retiring, as all of you know, or, and I don't, those of you in the audience may or may not know that Judy was our very long-serving and outstanding legislative director, who was with the city for many years, and she retired in August. And with that, um, we had the challenge of restructuring the council office and figuring out what, what made sense. Things have changed a lot since Judy had come into the job, and um, the mayor had a lot of good ideas about the need for, for more um, for more legislative affairs work. And so we had a reorganization, and the council office is now managed by Sarah Kasprowicz, who had joined us in early twenty nineteen, is that correct, Sarah? Okay, and so Sarah uh, is now managing the council office. Marilyn Mutzey, who has served in the Inspection Department for a long time, is coming over to join us in the council office. She's bringing over her um, ZBA responsibilities. The Administration of ZBA is moving back to the council office, where it was for many years, until I think two thousand and twelve, when it moved over to inspection. And then finally, um, LaShawn was hired by the uh, hired by the mayor to do the uh, very important legislative and governmental affairs work. And LaShawn is now the Director of the separate Department of Governmental Affairs, but is um, is the, the liaison from the mayor's office and city to the council, and works very, very closely with all of us. So it's um, it, it's really just all fallen into place, and it's, it's really great to have this team together and to work with such outstanding professionals every day. So um, I neglected to mention that I wanted to do it for a few meetings and just wanted to take the opportunity to do it. So looking forward to uh, to really, hopefully, all being able to work together in person in 2020. And with that, we go back to um, our final audience communication of 2020. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on any item that was not on this evening's agenda, seeing none, um, I see that Councilmember Toy has her hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanna say, this has been a real new experience, you know, in regards to the Zoom. And um, in many, many cases, it's wonderful, in many cases, it's challenging remembering to unmute your mute button. And if that's the worst of my worries during this holiday season and this year, then um, that's pretty sad. But I just wanna wish everybody um, in our great city, uh, very happy, healthy. Um, Jim, your family, get better, get going, uh, on it. And um, you know, it's so important for all of us to stay well and healthy and happy and get whatever you want for Christmas. Always ask for a whole lot, is my motto. And then in the new year, um, a great one, and hopefully, we'll be done with all this beer soup. And so God bless all of you, and it's a pleasure to serve with all of you. Um, at times when we agree disagree, or we can't even hug each other anymore, so it's rather sad. And I particularly like to, not because she's my friend and things, but I wanna thank Susie Nash for all her hard work this year on a very contentious election, um, in so many ways. And um, you know, she, she and her team really helped, and the rest of the city that helped her in various times and, and challenges that were there. Um, just an outstanding job, really, really did. And many of you that run departments in our city, excellent, excellent work. We're, we're just so proud of Livonia, so thank you, everyone. Take care.
Uh, Vice President Barr.
Thank you, Madam President, I just wanted to echo, I, I sincerely hope that we're all back together soon. I really miss uh, I miss the interaction among Council. And um, I, I think, I, I think we've done a really nice job this year of working through it, but there's definitely a dynamic that is missing, um, you know, not, not being able to, to work together in person. Uh, it feels more like we're just sometimes robots here voting versus having the chance to, to discuss things. Even though we can use phone calls and things, it's just different. So certainly wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hope that sooner than later, we can all be together. And I'd be remiss too, if I didn't acknowledge Councilman Donovanick, who just continues to serve our country um, over in the Middle East. And Rob, I don't know, you know, I, I don't, I'm not sure, you probably don't even know when you'll be back with us in person, but just wanna assure you that um, that our prayers are with you, and certainly wish you a uniquely Merry Christmas as well. We'll, we'll continue to keep you in our thoughts and prayers.
Uh, Councilmember Donovanick.
Thank you, Madam President, and uh, thank you, Scott. Uh, all members of Council, I wanted to wish you all a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, um, and to the entire city of Livonia, our mayor, the leadership staff, all LaShawn, Sarah, and so many of you that I've, I've started to get to know, I will meet when I get back and uh, when we're all allowed to go back to some sort of normalcy and, and meet in person. Uh, this is my first year in Council with Brandon, and it's been an absolute joy. It's definitely been different, if you had told me last, last year at this time, we'd be doing this online, uh, I would have laughed, and I think we all would have. But hats off, shout out to Casey and the IT Department for making this available for, not only myself, but all of us as a team, to continue to serve our residents. And um, just like I said, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to you all, and to your family.
All right, thank you, and uh, stay safe and Godspeed, Councilman Donovanick. And with that, I would be happy to uh, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move approval to adjourn.
Support from, was that Toy? Support from Toy, who is muted. But we saw it, we saw it, Councilmember Toy.
The perfect way to end the year.
Perfect way. Uh, with that, I think we can show, safely show seven. So good night, everyone, and uh, have a great holiday, and we'll see everyone in January.